Hey.
Yes.
Hey, I'm doing. The seats and then I think we can start at six and the other.
Um.
I guess.
Oh, I've done it down like that. But that's what we had.
Hey, I think.
If if it helps, it's for her mom to.
Yeah.
Should be the one.
Yeah, it's all right. But um what'll happen is I'll give a present.
No, no.
Just sort of summarizing what I.
First, that's unusual.
Hey, good to see you. You too.
Um, I have a couple of absentees, I guess.
Yeah, spring break.
Yeah, it's probably. Remember your, we had actually, I was born in the spring break.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, but. Yeah, that's. None of them too bad. Do it.
Yeah.
They respond so quickly on the. Going station.
Okay. Well, we actually, we we uh since then we met, but. Oh, they want to do it, yeah.
Oh, is that.
And.
It's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, Joe. Oh, like just one thing.
That I um was our very. Yeah, it would be in David. Some. Dan, how are you?
Dan, how are you?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. Well, yeah. So you. Right. Yeah. That's. I'm sorry.
No, it's.
Yeah.
But then that's. That's. Yeah. Yeah. The normal, the normal.
How are you doing?
Normal. It does one of your teams.
Are they.
I saw. What is.
Yeah.
Do I have. Slink or.
Yeah.
Soon.
When I saw you. Patients were summarizing.
When I got. Then I saw you guys.
You need to proceed sort of thing from saying. Or if you want, you know, because why are you doing. Yeah, and then just just be available.
I'll be doing.
How are you doing? Bleach taking the stretch over here.
That's all. It's I mean, I can sense that. They're all recommended for the group.
Yeah, it's happy easy month, but now they're not always.
There.
Is that.
Hmm. The boss.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. It's what what case and you.
I'm just gonna skip. We should agree.
Yeah, so you'd be.
But yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a real. Unfortunately, you get to the work.
Yeah, I know.
It's but the.
Yes.
So you get to.
Yeah.
Most cases.
Yeah.
You get the end of the. So it's my practice.
Yes.
Learn from any mistakes that.
Yeah, I think it.
Hopefully, it's for this move.
Then.
I think they're better. As always.
Yep.
All right. Uh, Artie's arrived, so we can now start. And it's uh. Six P M. Straight up, so we're going to commence the zoning board of appeals meeting for April fourth, twenty twenty four. Calling me to order the roll call. Uh, there are five of us this evening. So we Claire and uh. Ryan S. Are are missing, so we'll proceed with the minutes from March seventh. Anyone have a chance to review the minutes or have any suggested edits?
I moved. I moved to adopt the minutes. I reviewed them and they're fine to me.
Excellent. First and second to approve the March seventh meeting. So those in favor. Thank you. Minutes approved. I don't believe there's any organizational or procedural items. And we don't have any unfinished business. We were quite tidy last month. So we'll move on to the new business. Before we do so, I'll read my zoning board of appeals chairman's preamble. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. With that, we'll start with uh Z B A twenty four oh three. The homeowners at fifty two ninety nine Redfield Court are seeking two variances. Staff, would you walk us through that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the variances is from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, and that's to allow a deck to encroach into the rear setback. And the other one is from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine, to allow retaining wall to encroach into the rear and side setback and to allow that retaining wall height to be up to eight feet. So these are the existing conditions. The subject lot is owned R one hundred. It's point four acres, and it's a double frontage lot, so it has frontage on both Redfield Ridge and Redfield Court. Um, so that means it has two street setbacks, uh, one rear setback and one side setback. Um, the survey is to the right, um, and the existing rear of the house is in the photo to the left. A portion of the existing house encroaches into the rear setback. So in March twenty twenty three, the city of Dunwoody received a code complaint about unpermitted work being due, being done on the property due to sediment removal and issued a stop work order, which has since been removed. Um, and none of the improvements today, that are none of the improvements that are here for approval before you all today have been installed yet. Um, just sort of the pre-work of removing some of the soil had been done. So the applicant proposes to build a five hundred and ninety four square foot deck to the rear of the home, which will have an associated retaining wall of a maximum of eight feet. Both the deck and the retaining wall will encroach into the rear setback by a maximum of twenty seven feet and thirty feet respectively. The retaining wall will also encroach into the side setback by approximately five feet. Both the setback encroachments for the deck and the retaining wall and the height of the retaining wall prompt variances, and again, neither of those improvements have been built yet. Um, the encroachment of the retaining wall and the height of the retaining wall could normally done, could be normally done via a special administrative permit, but since they're going through the variance process anyway, we've routed it all through the same process. Um, additionally, a portion of the deck is elevated. I know sometimes decks don't require variances because they're um ground level, but a portion of this deck is elevated due to the topography of the property, so that's why that's here before you tonight. So the subject property meets the minimum standards for law area and width. However, as a corner lot, it is two street setbacks and a rear setback, which constrain the buildable area more than your typical non-corner lot. Um, the buildable area is further constrained by the placement of the house, which faces the intersection of Redfield Ridge and Redfield Court and is placed at a fairly unusual angle in relation to the setbacks. Additionally, the house is set back more than thirty five feet from both of the properties frontages, um, causing approximately twenty percent of the house to encroach into the rear setback and reducing the buildable area further. Um, there's almost no room for improvements to the rear of the house within the buildable area. Rear decks are pretty common in this subdivision. Many of the surrounding lots have decks to the rear of the home, and the applicant's proposed deck is a relatively minor improvement. Um, the purpose of the retaining wall is to assist with the construction of the deck and to account for the unique topography, the property slopes down approximately fourteen feet from the northeast corner to the southwest corner. Accordingly, the proposed project does appear to be the minimum necessary to afford relief and was not constitute a grant of special privilege. Staff finds a strict application of the setback requirements could cause practical difficulty by not allowing for incremental changes to the property. So overall, we find that the project and the request do meet the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, we're recommending approval um based on the standard conditions here, and then we did receive two letters in support um from the adjoining, sorry, from the adjoining neighbors, um, and those were included in your pocket.
Thank you. Board, any initial questions based on that?
Uh, you'd mentioned just, uh, there was two variances, one which could have been especially done administratively. What was, aside from a code complaint, what triggered everything to be rolled together again? What was like the initiating trigger?
Um, so periodically, if we have a project that's going to do, you know, where part of it could be done administratively and part of it could be done with a variance, we typically roll it all into one variance process. It, we find that it's easier for us and the applicant, and then they don't have to pay the fees for both a special administrative permit and a variance.
Thanks.
I have a quick question, though, some. So the code uh complaint. What was the nature of that? Somebody's digging and and disturbing my property?
There was sediment in the street.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, you can sort of see here that there's a pretty steep slope from sort of the right-hand side to the left-hand side in the picture on the left and that. Um, you know, and then if you compare that with the survey on the right, there's that driveway, and so it all sort of slopes down toward the road there.
Got you.
And as a general rule of thumb, anytime digging is occurring, you should do a silt fence.
Yeah, you can't sort of have your sediment going into the public right of way.
Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you. Would the applicant care to uh address the board? And um state your case for the variance. Just state your name and address and.
It's going to come, Mark, so I can. My address is fifty two ninety nine Redfield Court. I'm the homeowner.
Right. Okay, and you're requesting the variance uh. Why should the board grant you the variance from from these two that you're asking for? Is there any particular reasons or that staff did a nice job outlining it? Any other color you'd like to to add to that? Okay. Um, so the 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 large hole we see in this picture, I guess you have it as well. So that is strictly for the uh retaining wall or is there?
Yes, actually, I removed the dirt from the base close to the house because the problem with water was like floating my basement.
Okay.
So I decided, you know, to push, you know, the dirt and put a tanning wall away from the basement, so.
And the and the deck will be raised above that or lowly filled in? Okay. Okay.
Okay, okay.
So. In this large cleared area that we see.
Hmm.
Are the decks, the decks posts will go in there.
Right, but. Post is gonna be just close to the house, and deck is gonna sit on the tanning wall.
Ah.
So it's gonna be like, you know, level with the sunroom, what you can see on the picture on of the house.
Okay, so what's going to fill in this big empty area?
There that is gonna be open. It's gonna be like gravel for storage, like for like yard, you know.
And so what are you putting up around the sides of that?
On the side is gonna be wall that covers this.
Okay.
And on the on the yard is gonna be level with the ground, so.
Okay, so you'll have a concrete slab at the base of it and then walls around the sides.
Yes.
And I I can't see from the picture, but that, does that allow you access into a basement door?
Yeah, it's gonna access me under the deck so I can storage like yard tools and all this stuff.
Okay.
Ground more and all this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
We'll we'll ask you more questions, I think, when you close.
Um, okay, great, thanks. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor? I know we had the two letters, but anybody uh fill out any comment cards? Anybody want to talk? All right. Um, anyone else speak in opposition of the project? None here, so uh we'll close it and uh to public comment and. Board questions?
Yeah, I have a little bit more questions about the hole, but uh if you come, it comes back. Oh, could the applicant come back, please? Thank you. So just want to make sure I understand that that's right. Um, the there's, when you look at the picture.
Hmm.
Okay, you see there's a window towards the.
It's double.
Beginning. Those are the beginning of the picture. You see, I'm not talking about the portion, the portion that's closest to the. I I think, yeah, it's it's to the left. I can't, maybe that might be an air conditioner or something like that, but there there's something black there. You see the black thing on the left?
On on the left, it's like a concrete mixer.
Okay. Right, so now there's a window right above it.
Yeah, it's an opening. Yes, it's bay window.
Okay, I know. So is that where the access is gonna be to the house?
No, yeah, it's gonna be for the porch.
Okay.
So it's gonna be uh access from the porch and also from the sunroom. It's gonna be same level like the door on the sunroom when it's on the fr- front.
Got you. So from 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 that level, which is gonna be the subterranean, the basement, I'm thinking you're gonna be able to access it to go through your potential storage area.
Yes.
Uh, and then and the rest of it, where all the dirt is now, is gonna be covered in concrete or wall.
Yes, well, yes.
All right, good. I I just want to feel better about if I'm gonna grant this, what's gonna be there. Exactly, exactly. Right, right, because it it's it's a, it, at least to me, it looks odd, and when I'm, I'm to somebody that does construction, I guess it's fine, but to me, this is a first for me.
Okay.
It's uh in that respect, how do you access? Uh, so you're building a two two-tiered deck, so to speak, or like a two-story? How do you access from the top, either the sunroom? Or.
It's gonna be level with the.
Right, right, but how do you get back underneath? You have to go out and around? Are you are you doing staircase down or?
No, I'm not gonna have staircase. I have another gate on another.
Okay.
Of the yard.
Okay.
Because it's corner lots, so.
So it's literally like storage for, like you said, tools, okay?
Ground more and more.
Okay.
Are you doing this yourself or you have a contractor?
Uh, no, I'm doing myself. Actually, I have contractor to who put the concrete wall, but the rest I will do myself.
Okay, okay. So I'm guessing the city, he pulled the permits, I'm guessing by now. Well, there was no permit needed because.
Yeah.
Somebody squealed. No, I'm just kidding. Yes, exactly. But but I gotta tell you, I I do feel better that the reason why is because of the silt. You know, that was coming as opposed to yeah, I don't know, somebody's property that was being destabilized or something else that 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 they were, they felt that they had to say something about their neighbors because, man, there was this stuff coming and running in the driveway in the street in constant, probably. All right, okay, I'm good.
On the corner lot, right, the build buildability of the lot, right? You always see the the setbacks are kind of prohibitive with um on these corner lots like this, so.
And the houses at such an odd placement that it it's got everything working against it to be able to make do any sort of backyard improvement or front yard.
Yeah, and and he's doing it himself, so I have nobody else to blame. We should have known better.
Yeah, if if it was excessive, like if the buildout was excessive or the remodel is excessive, then you think, well, maybe he's creating his own conditions, but it doesn't really be be the case.
All right, I won't take that.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Okay, um. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow a deck to encroach into the rear setback and a variance from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine, to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the rear and side setback and to allow retaining wall height of eight feet with the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by the applicant twenty twenty three, C. Appendix A. If construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
We have first and a second for approval. All those in favor? All right. Approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yep, thank you. Moving on to Z B A twenty four dash oh four. Homeowners at fifty two eighty seven Winter Creek Way requesting a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow a house addition and screen porch to encroach into the rear setback.
Thank you. So the subject lot is owned R one hundred. It's point four acres. So in twenty twenty, a variance, um, it was Z B A twenty dash oh nine was approved for the property to allow a home addition to encroach into the rear setback. Um, that hasn't been constructed, and they've since come back to us with an updated plan for that. Um, so there is a ten-foot sewer easement and a fifteen-foot drainage easement, both located in the northern part of the property. The applicant will be encroaching into those, and I have that shown on the site plan. And then the photos here of the existing um improvements to the rear of the house. You can see in the photo on the on the left, there's a screen porch, and on the photo on the right, there's sort of a patio area. So as part of a larger project, the applicant proposes to construct a seven hundred and fifty square foot two-story addition to the rear of the house and to expand an existing screen porch. That's the one you saw in the photos on the on the previous slide to the rear of the house to um four hundred and sixteen square feet. The improvements will encroach into the rear setback by a maximum of of eleven feet. The applicant also proposes to extend both the rear patio and the driveway, which are by right improvements. Um, they're flat to the ground, and so they don't need a variance. They're outside of the scope of this. I just mentioned it as context for the larger project that they're doing. So a rendering of what the rear of the house would look like would can be seen in the top right corner. And then in the bottom right corner, there's the site plan, and then there's sort of a zoomed-in version on the left. Um, so what you want to pay attention to there is the screen port shown in red and the master suite shown in green. Those are the two improvements that they're coming forward um for the variance today. Uh, the other ones do not, the other improvements do not require a variance, and I'm happy to refer back to this slide at any time for more clarification on that. So the sewer easement and the drainage easement, um, which was shown in blue on the site plan to the right, um, cover a large portion of the lot. They sort of intersect at the top corner, and they reduce the buildable area by approximately twenty five percent and leaving almost no room for improvements to the house in the northern part of the property. Um, this is fairly unusual. There's only a few other lots in the subdivision that have both a sewer easement and a drainage easement on their property. Um, rear porches are common in this subdivision. Many of the surrounding lots have rear porches and patios, and the applicant seeks merely to expand an already existing porch, which is a relatively minor improvement. Additionally, the proposed house addition is an incremental change to the existing home and appears to be the minimum necessary to afford relief, so staff finds that it would not constitute a grant of special privilege. Um, staff finds a strict application of the setback requirements could cause practical difficulty by not allowing for incremental changes to the use of the property. Um, overall, we find that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Based on those reasons, we're recommending approval of the request subject to the standard conditions shown on the screen here.
Thank you. Any uh questions regarding that explanation?
I do have two quick questions. So the prior requests that came before the board in two in twenty twenty, that just goes away. I'm assuming it expired, plus the applicant has completely revised the plans.
Correct. They didn't construct it um within two years, so.
Okay, and then also, is there any concern over the increased impervious surface? I I think I read in the either this, I guess, the application of the staff memo that the new total lot coverage is thirty one point five. Oh, here it is, thirty one point five percent.
Hmm.
Um, so that's.
Yeah, they're under their maximum lot coverage, um, and part of the reason for that is because they have that sort of existing patio area, and a lot of the improvements are being built over that, so there's not a ton more um.
Other than the master suite.
Correct, and a portion of the master suite is being built over that as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The the orange that's on the slide says parking spot, is that a um?
It's a drive. That's an addition of the driveway.
An addition of the driveway. Okay, thank you. Not a carport or anything, just an addition of the driveway?
No, just flat concrete.
Okay. Thank you. See applicant or the representative here to address the board?
Hello, I'm Billy George in the thing. The green, the easiest way to explain it, the green box, this is actually to move my mother-in-law in. I have four kids, so we're full pretty much, and I have nowhere to put her, so the green is just an additional master on main for her, and then the red is really just expanding to make it make sense because of the way the construction works, so. Yeah, and that's really it. The original variance. Honestly, the main reason we didn't do that, things got weird during COVID, and so I just was afraid to do anything, and then it was actually only good for a year, I think. And it expired, and then things were still weird, and so now we're here, so.
Okay.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
George Wolf, fifty two eighty seven Winter Creek Way.
Yep. Okay, great, thank you. We have a few more minutes. If anybody else wants to speak in favor? I didn't recall seeing any letters or anything either, so. So with that, we'll ask if there's any opposition this evening to this variance. Okay, closing to public comment board. No questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow a house addition and screen porch to encroach into the rear setback with the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by the applicant, see appendix A. Number two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this approval or variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
First and second motion for approval. All those in favor? It passes. Congrats. Thank you. Final case this evening is Z B A twenty four dash oh five. The homeowners at fifty three eighty Brookridge Drive request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy eight, to allow a porch to encroach into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer.
So this property is owned R C D. That's residential community development, and that is one of our obsolete zoning districts. The whole neighborhood was rezoned from R one hundred to R C D in nineteen eighty four. The property is point five acres, and the stream and associated buffer are located in the rear part of the property. You can see that highlighted in blue on the site plan to the right. A portion of an existing deck and concrete slab are already located in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. You can see the existing deck on the left. And so the applicant proposes to construct a porch to the rear of the house, of which a portion will encroach into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer. All except one hundred and thirty-six square feet of the porch will be built over existing concrete and will replace the existing uncovered deck. The porch is shown in red on the site plan to the right. So the seventy-five-foot stream buffer covers approximately half of the property and most of the backyard, making it difficult for the homeowner to make any improvements to the rear of the house without encroaching into the buffer. Increasing the impervious surface within the stream buffer by one hundred and thirty-six square feet would be a minimally intrusive improvement, impacting only approximately one point three percent of the stream buffer. The project will require only minimal disturbance to install the footings, and construction would not significantly impact the stream bank, natural habitat, or water quality. Additionally, the applicant proposes to mitigate any impacts on the stream buffer from the encroachment by capturing runoff generated by the project in a rain barrel. As rear porch is a standard improvement for most homeowners, and this proposal seeks to expand only slightly beyond what currently exists. Many of the other homes in the Dunwoody Club subdivision have rear porches. Therefore, staff finds that there would be no special privileges granted and finds that the project does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief. Staff finds that denial of the variance could cause an undue hardship by preventing by preventing the homeowner reasonable use of their property. Overall, we find that requested variance will be consistent with the spirit and purpose of this zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Based on these reasons, we're recommending approval of the request subject to our standard conditions here and mandating that the porch shall be installed with hand tools only, which is our standard condition for stream buffer variances to mitigate disturbance to the buffer.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions of the interpretation?
Yeah, you mentioned R C D versus R one hundred. Can I, I know nothing about R C Ds, it's just.
Yeah, it has sort of fewer setback and lot coverage requirements than R one hundred.
Yeah, I can quickly speak to this, that in sort of zoning history, every decade, there comes a new thing that is the fashionable thing of the time. We have like two districts, R C H and R C D, and they're supposed to be cluster home districts. You know, where you keep like a part of the overall site, you keep it free, and for that you can sort of rearrange the density sort of more creatively. That was sort of the the fad of the eighties and nineties, and yeah, they're not active districts anymore.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mentioned it just to provide context in case you sort of saw it on the staff memo, and we're confused about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are the applicants or their representative here this evening to address the board? State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Skip Hebert or John Hebert. I live at fifty three eighty Brookridge Drive in the Brookridge subdivision.
Thank you. Any anything else you'd like to add beyond what the staff is scope of the project need for the variance?
No, we agree with all staff comments and respectfully request your approval tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, that's good. We'll get to that in a second, potentially. Anybody else here want to speak in favor of the project? Anyone in opposition? All right, now we can ask questions.
I have a question, but it's related to some of the pictures that you submitted, and I'm just curious about the rain barrel. Is that already underneath your existing deck? Like, I saw something in the pictures, and I was wondering, is that the rain barrel?
That is the rain barrel. We moved to Dunwoody last April, and that is a rain barrel that I had at my previous residence. So we brought it brought it here. It's a hundred and ten gallon rain barrel. So it's a little bit larger than most typical rain barrels, and we plan to to hook that up to the the downspouts on the porch.
I love that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're essentially just putting the addition over the porch, just covering that and slightly enlarging it. Is that some summation of the project?
That's correct. There's an existing deck now, an open-air deck now, and we did a similar thing to our the house that we've moved from about ten years ago, and we really enjoyed it during the the spring and summer, or the spring and fall months. And essentially, what we're gonna do is try to use much of the structure of the existing deck, build out another addition. I think it's about ten feet, about about twelve feet addition over what we have now, and then enclose that or cover it with a roof, and it'll be screened in. It'll be open underneath.
Okay. The screen porch. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like most of the houses in the street buffer.
It is. At seventy-five feet, you know.
Yeah, seventy-five feet.
It sure limits them, one point three percent.
Of what they can do.
Yeah, in encroachment.
It's like a hundred and thirty-six feet or something.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Right, Artie.
All right, here we go. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, to allow a porch to encroach into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer with the following condition: One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by the applicant and dated one night to two thousand and twenty four. You could see it in appendix A. Second, the porch shall be installed with hands tool only. And three, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You bet. Thank you. Any other business? No public comment? Board comment?
I do want to thank staff for always making such, putting together such complete staff memos and also our agendas and scripts for the approvals. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for all that you do to make sure we have all the information we need.
Yeah, like anchor people, we just read the script of the.
I know, yeah, I know, but but they put a lot of work into this. When I look at this and I go, wow.
Well, that's pretty good. No, it's excellent. They do an excellent job. I agree. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.
All right, guys. Thank you. Yes, we are. Twenty-nine. See Ryan, you can run to the next thing now, right?